Welcome everyone out to the sunflower room here at the public works facility for our Loveland County. My name is Peter Clark. I am the public works director and county engineer for Potawatomi County in charge of all the roads, bridges, and also facilities. Pull it up and hold it right here. There we go. Just gotta get closer. Excellent. Like I said, my name's Peter Clark. I'm the county engineer and public works director for the county. And part of my charge is the facilities for the county. And I'm very happy to have this meeting for us to be able to talk with you about a part of our facilities that's very important, the county courthouse. Just as an introduction, we have a number of county officials here with us. We have our county commissioners, Commissioner Chair Pat Waxman, our Vice Chair, Joyce McKee, and also Chair Member, also Commissioner Member Travis Altenhoffen. So we have all of our commissioners here represented. We also have our county clerk Nancy McCarter. I believe we also have our county counselor, John Watts. He's present. There he is on the floor. And also have our county administrator, Robert Reese, here in the back. So we are well represented and I believe we have good representation also here from our county residents and citizens. Like I said, we're here to talk about the county courthouse and how it is involved in the facility lifecycle cost assessment project to try and make the best decisions for our county facilities. We hired a consultant, BG Consultants, to assist us in this project. Clint Hibbs from BG is here to be able to speak with us about the project and the results that we got from it. But just as a kind of housekeeping items, the bathroom for this facility is just out that door to the left in case you need to use the facilities. Emergency exits, you can see where you came in here, there's also an exit out that way in case you need so. In addition, there's probably going to be a lot of questions and some of you may have written down questions already. I think Nancy, you were prompting people with note cards to do so. We still encourage you, if you do not have a note card and you have a question, to please raise your hand and we can get those note cards passed out to you. Some of you have written down questions now, already beforehand. Many of those questions might get answered during the presentation. Actually, I hope they do. But you may have questions that come up as we go through the presentation. So if you want to have a card in hand to write that down, we'll be able to collect those after Clint's presentation before we get into the question and answer session. So what our plan is, is that after I turn the mic over to Clint for his presentation, we'll go through his presentation pretty much just straight through. I know you may have questions, but we're going to let him proceed through his presentation without letting, without having to stop him and interrupt him. Once he gets to the end of his presentation, we'll have a little bit of time for you to gather your thoughts and we'll be able to sort through the questions, make sure we know, because there may be a lot of similar questions. I don't want to ask the same question five different times or 10 times. We want to try to get them as concise as possible. At about 7:35, 7:40, we'll then begin the question and answer session. And we'll answer those questions, try to get through them as best as possible. Ideally, we are wrapped up here around 8 o'clock. Try not to keep you guys too long. But if we consolidate the questions, we can hopefully hit all of the main points that you guys are concerned about within that period of time. I know Clint's, he talks pretty fast, so I know he won't speak too fast so you guys won't be able to get everything you need out of him, but we'll try to make sure we get it taken care of. Pat?
Yeah. I want to welcome all of you here. And I want to reiterate that this is an informative meeting tonight. And we're going to try to wrap it up like Peter said, by 8 o'clock, maybe 10 after. So I guess that's saying that we're going to get Clint to try to get going through a pretty good clip. But we're not going to have time for everybody's questions. And some of these questions, you know, if they're like, are you looking at grant, you know, areas, are you looking at grant money? I can tell you right now that we are. Okay? We're exploring some of those, but it takes so long to research. I'm just trying to let you know that, you know, try to keep the meeting going. It's an informative meeting and we'll try to take some, you know, questions here after Clint gets there.
All right. With that, we'll turn the time over to Mr. Hibbs with our presentation on the lifecycle cost assessment.
Hi. Thank you. Can you all hear me? Well? Perfect.
People, we can't hear you. You can't answer if you're wired up.
Oh, okay. Well, first of all, I've talked too loud. I apologize. Partly, I'm very excited to be here today, to be able to share with you some of our findings. I am an architect with BG Consultants and we were asked by Potawatomi County Commissioners to understand what are the buildings like today? What are the conditions? And it's not just about what the conditions are, it's about what we're doing as we look forward to the future so that they are able to invest that money that is public funding to support and sustain these facilities looking forward. So a presentation outline here, of course, are welcome, was provided by Peter and he did an excellent job and Pat as well. We're going to talk and share with you a little bit about the 2017 lifecycle assessment. What does that mean, a lifecycle assessment? We'll talk a little bit about the value that buildings have, the recommendation process that we went through as designers and architects and planners. We're going to focus then on the courthouse. And I hope that some of the things we talked about, we'll address some of the questions you may have. And we look forward to the other questions that you have that we may not be addressing specifically tonight. And then we'll have a question and answer period that follows. Now, why do master planning? Why look at your facilities and understand them? At the end of the day, the purpose is to make sure that the facilities you have today function well so that the county can serve the public, not only today, but in the future. And in fact, we've looked at all of the county buildings here in Westmoreland to assess them for both physical condition, getting into weeds and the details of them, their needs for repair, maintenance, and capital renewal needs, and remaining useful life. So let's talk about the 2017 lifecycle assessment. So our role as architects and engineers was to explore and understand the most cost-effective means to maintain, reuse, and expand the existing buildings over the next 20 years. This started in 2015 with a space needs assessment. So what we did at that time, understanding growth within the community in Potawatomi County, you might think of blue township and other communities where there's a lot of growth. We looked at how is that going to impact the departments, the staffing needs, the bridge and road departments, the number of vehicles going to need to maintain the facilities and so forth. Well, we put together some concepts on how to pull departments together more cohesively, more successfully as we look in the future. Now, let's look at one piece, our space needs. Do we have the room to take care of our needs today, 10 years from now, 20 years from now? Now, if you look at anything in the future, you know, like when you see those maps, hurricane maps, that they show every year and they kind of have this display of where the hurricane could go, the further we look out in the future, the harder it is for us to pinpoint exactly how growth is going to occur. But we have a very clear sense of what's happening in the near future. We were asked to look at the lifecycle costs of the buildings, we're maintaining them. So as we build, especially in the near term, in the next five years, planning for needs, because there are needs that we have right now, there are spaces we don't have that are needed for the county. But we also understand when we go and we invest in the property that we currently have, that when we're spending that money, is it being well utilized under long-term investment? So we've provided five, 10, and 20-year periods of studies to understand this and provided recommended scenario that would be most cost-effective. Now, a lifecycle report is about looking at a facility to objectively measure and determine the current facility's physical condition. Basically, we're looking at how good of a condition it's in and how much do we need to invest in it to maintain it? Your water heater goes out at home, you replace it. In this case, we're doing the same thing, except we have information that allows us and tools to help us understand when we're looking forward to when we can anticipate a replacement need coming for a water heater or a similar item. And then we provide recommendations to correct these deficiencies as we look in the future. What this does, it empowers the county to understand as each year comes by in a five-year period, how much money they should allocate to be able to make sure they maintain their existing facilities. That's its main purpose. Now, there are significant values that are realized through this process. So for example, increased credibility, understanding that when you're trying to figure out your budget and where you're going to allocate your funds, you can do so more clearly when you have an understanding of the vision of where you're going in the future. You can also procure savings. Strategic timing of purchases can be planned. You can rank your funding needs so that when you have limited funds or a cap on your funding capabilities, you can prioritize, okay, I realize I can't fix this restroom right now. However, the roof has to be replaced. That's a higher priority, so I'm going to fix that. And of course, budgeting and scheduled planning. Now, facility assessments, we walked through all the facilities, we inventoried them, we were in this space, all the different spaces, we got up in the ceilings, above where we see beyond our finishes, to understand the current condition. And we explored and discovered the needs that are immediate. Today, there are a number of needs we're going to share with you, specific to the courthouse. We're also going to share with you anticipated future needs for the courthouse. We did this for all facilities across this community so that we can help the county understand their needs. Now, before going further, I want to talk a little about the value of a building. As an architect, I love buildings. I remember the first time I really became infatuated with the idea of the building environment is when I came up to the State House in Topeka as a young man. Well, buildings are a core part of an organization. The buildings aren't Potawatomi County or its citizens, but it represents the county, its citizens, and the services that it provides. It needs to facilitate that. So all these facilities, especially right now, it needs to be able to facilitate our ability to meet. Now, beyond just being able to be functional, buildings need to have a useful life. They need to function for a long time. If you think about an old building, that may be an old barn that hasn't been maintained for a long time, eventually it becomes a derelict, it becomes unusable, it may tilt to the side, it may collapse eventually. But you'll notice that those spaces which are used, you may keep livestock in or maintain them, they last a lot longer. Once we exceed the useful life of a component, a door will last for a certain number of years. Once we exceed that number of years that are planned for it, assuming we're maintaining it, the cost of those repairs will increase and get higher. Now, buildings, as we know, are getting older every day. And so we need to continually be mindful of this in the county. I think it's done an excellent job focusing on understanding the need to maintain their facilities. And especially this assessment helps us understand that value more clearly. Now, when we look at buildings, there's a number of things. First of all, I mentioned our buildings are one of our number one assets that we have. We should understand when to recycle a building or when to renovate it. We look at short-term, long-term costs. We also try to understand that long-term costs on older buildings can sometimes be higher than new construction, but not always. That's why we have to get into the details with an assessment, and that was part of what we were tasked to do. Also, we noticed many times, buildings as they age, become non-compliant with building codes and regulations, things that we may not even think are critical. You know, we may walk these buildings as youth and are older age, but there are things that need to be updated on these to make sure that they are as safe as possible and as accessible as possible. We look at if the building's in advantageous location. Can the renovations be realized in the building? Imagine an all-stone building versus a wood-framed building. One's going to be possibly easier to modify and reconfigure than another. Another component we look at, for example, historic buildings. Our firm does a lot of work with historic buildings throughout the state of Kansas, a lot of courthouses to mention of particular note. And some of the things that are considered, and I think that there might be some interest, and you have an older facility, it's not on the register, and that's okay. But I think there's also value in understanding what the historic register does. When you look at it, it provides recognition of a property's significance. That could be historical, could be communal, it might just be the architecture of the space. One of the things to keep in mind, of course, being on the register doesn't automatically preserve a building, but it does provide some protection in the form of consideration and mitigation of the thing. So imagine if you had a building on a register and it's an all, like a stone building, you're probably going to protect it from going around and being skinned with metal all the way around, which would completely change its aesthetic. That's part of the intent. Now, it does require compliant, compliance and maintenance and replacement of materials. And this is partly a result of the Interior, Department of Interior's requirements, that there are some things that are sensitive to replacements. You can modify things in a building, but there are certain things that, especially on a state, local side, need to be protected. There also provides limits to acceptable performance with modernization needs. Sometimes changing space completely and gutting out a facility, if that's needed for a function, is generally not an ideal candidate for historic preservation. And of course, the impacts of lifecycle costs should be assessed if they're higher or lower as you maintain a facility. And again, something to keep in mind is if you have, whether you're reusing a building or putting on a register, or even building new, that doesn't guarantee that that facility will be maintained. The organization that maintains that facility still has the obligation to maintain that. In this case, we're talking about county facilities, so the county would be obligated to maintain. Now, when should a building be raised? A building should be evaluated to understand its current use versus desired use. Sometimes the structure is adaptable to need, and sometimes it may not be. What changes need to be performed and what changes can be met? And in particular, one thing to consider and understand is, does a building hold any special significance? Sometimes, when a building has significance beyond its usefulness, that values, it's not being raised. But that needs to be considered based on the value of it, and that may indicate a higher cost investment. And again, that's an O, that's all right. Our cost, again, our role here was to figure out what the most cost-effective thing is for the county. So we're going to share with you why we recommend that for the most cost-effective measure, the courthouse should be raised. Now, many of you have seen trees around as you go around and look at them. Quite honestly, building assessments is very much like maintaining, understanding a tree in many regards, quite honestly. Abraham Lincoln, during his presidency, had a very challenging issue that he had to face. And he shared an analogy, which was really interesting, about a farmer that had a tree that was on his farm and it framed a farmhouse. He was very proud of the tree, it was an old tree, part of old growth, and he kept it there. He loved it. Well, he never really got close to that tree. He kind of kept it from a distance. He really enjoyed the way he framed his house and his farm. And then one day while I was working in his yard, the yard worker, you know, it's a squirrel, run at the tree and run into a hole. It was the first time that he took the time to really closely investigate, walked over the tree and saw that there was a hollowing occurring in that tree. The outside of the tree was beautiful, but it was beginning to hollow on the inside. And so he was very disheartened, walks away, you know, what can I do to fix this tree? When we do a facility assessment, we are able to look at a building and fully understand what kind of costs or improvements we need to invest into a facility. If we walk up into a facility and we find that there are issues with our buildings, we have the opportunity to identify corrective measures to repair that facility. And today, we're going to share with you the corrective measures that can help us correct and repair the old courthouse and share with you those costs and those comparison costs to raising the facility. Now, the recommendation process. We did a physical condition assessment, we walked through every facility, and we applied construction repair costs to every improvement need based on current year dollars, today's dollars, we determined how often that would need to occur. We also organized and prioritized needs, and then we established total relative costs based on the number of years. Now, what I'm going to share with you is a little background to some of the information that we're able to glean, and this is going to be, again, specific to the courthouse, but we did this for all facilities. This is a condition assessment abstract, if you will. When we walk through the buildings, we look at site, building envelope, building roofs, we look at floor systems, foundation systems, finishes, mechanical systems, we look at it in its entirety. And here we've identified stone pointing, which I highlighted so that you can see that. And we have a rating scale, good, fair, poor, and failing. Good and fair means that the facilities or the materials themselves are in good condition. For example, this drywall right here has a condition rating. That condition rating is good, incidentally, for this building. However, when we look at this courthouse, we know that there was, stone pointing was not in good or fair condition. In fact, it was in poor, failing condition. By then, that's why you see these black marks, meaning that there needs to be corrective measures implemented now. It is not a time or a day to delay in investing and improving these facilities. Now, here's an image, some of you have walked through today, you probably saw this. For example, the joints are weakened, missing in places. What this does is it allows moisture to get into the buildings and begin to damage the rock. It also allows moisture to get further into the building, damaging the building, allowing rod, if you will, into the joints that tie into these walls. These are things that need to be remediated, they need to be repaired. And so again, the assessment allows us to identify this. You'll also notice that at the courthouse, we have some really good things going on in there. The restrooms are in really good condition. They were recently renovated, I believe 2005, if I'm not mistaken. And so they're green, so there's some components there that are in good condition. Now, when we look at the building overall, we step back and say, let's look at all the components together and its condition. You can see that red, or kind of a pink looking color here, actually shows that it's beyond the expected useful life of the building. Now, one thing I want to emphasize is that green represents a natural useful life, red represents exceeded, beyond. That doesn't mean failure. What it means is higher investment costs and sustainment costs of those systems. And now, we can plan for that, having understood those investment needs. Now, we take that information, we go a step further, we identify particular items and issues. And I know that there's a report online that you should be able to access, you can go through in detail and see everything that we've looked at on these sites. But we've looked at, for example, here, replacing exterior doors and frames and what needs to be done. This is an improvement category, asset maintenance. Most of the improvements for the courthouse and within the next five years that are recommended are either asset maintenance and repair or life safety improvements. Okay? Now, I'm not going to go through all these in details. You have copies of them in your, I believe you'll probably have a copy of this report when we're done. But I did want you to also see that we've gone in here and identified if we're going to take the door, demolish a single door frame, we reinstall it, how many times are we doing that over the next 20 years? What those average costs are today's values? We can understand how frequently something's happening and how much we need to plan for that cost. Now, as a county, the county has an opportunity at all sites and all facilities to look at this information and maintain their physical portfolio so they can sustain and maintain those facilities so that they exist and continue to go on further into the future. But again, we have to understand how much to invest. Now, we got into more detail, and this again is specific to the courthouse. We've gone through the building. I pulled out the side piece because it's independent of the building itself, but we're showing here, priority one. This is the next five years, the investment that should be integrated into that facility to maintain its viability in the county and this, and also for the future. You'll notice there's another column here for years six to 10 from now and years 11 to 20 from now. I'm going to go through these very briefly, just want you to know that we've gone through a lot of detail to understand when these repairs are anticipated. And of course, we know that there are acts of nature, acts of God, and of course, some of these things may shift around depending on some of those acts of nature or acts of God, if you will. But these are based on current basic needs. Now, when we look at the current zero to five years, I've highlighted here that basically what we're looking at is a million dollars that needs to be invested now into that building to maintain its viability and usefulness. That does not include construction, these were confused, it's about 1.1, but it's pretty close to the same cost. Now, more physical findings. You'll have in your documents, a report from all the facilities generally, but let's talk about the county courthouse. Built 1884, it is an older structure. It's something that has a historic precedence in this community. 1910 was an addition. 12,962 square foot of building, some of you walked up today. The next 20 years to maintain that facility, we should anticipate 1.9 million dollars. It's in poor condition right now, based on its facility condition index. But again, that's how much investment should be placed in that facility to get it to where it needs to be, just to be maintained. Now, let's say we were to replace that facility today with the same exact construction. We'd be over $3 million, obviously, to maintain that with the type of construction it is, all that stone. And again, 1.9 million is what I said is what's happening over the next 20 years. In the next five years, the facility needs 1.1 million dollars invested in it to sustain it. And that is one of the things that we found during our investigations. So the next component we looked at was the space availability throughout the district, I'm sorry, throughout the county. And I'm not going to go through this in a lot of detail, primarily what we just looked at, spaces, existing spaces versus current spaces, current space deficiencies, future space needs. And then, really, when you look at it, at the end of the day, the courthouse is unique because it's an older facility, all older facilities have a unique challenge in themselves and unique opportunities. So for example, many of you may have seen images such as this, like an older emergency room. Well, over time, the way that we utilize our spaces, in this case, medicine, healthcare uses a lot more integration of technology. So their space has changed, their square footage needs to change. Well, for our county, for this county, what's changed is that the space that's needed for all the services has changed, the number of staff. And so we just need to figure out how can we accommodate that and is it practical to do that within the existing courthouse and the other facilities we looked at as well? So we've planned for remodel costs to meet department functions for the courthouse as well. So let's turn the courthouse in detail. We've looked at six scenarios countywide. Three scenarios, renovate the courthouse, renovate and repair. They do not, in any of our instances, look at historic preservation. We do not do any historic preservation work. We do two scenarios where we replace, raise and replace the courthouse, and we did one scenario where nothing's done, essentially we just continue to defer maintenance for the next 20 years. Well, if we examine just the courthouse, here's what we've learned. In the next five years, the total investment cost that the county can anticipate to invest into that facility is 2.8 million if we repair, if we do repair and compliance for like life safety and fully utilize it, utilize that building to its fullest extent and bring departments into that space within the county. Again, that's five years looking forward. The repair and compliance costs, I shared it was 1.1 million dollars. The full utilization is 1.7 million. So that's just more work that you're doing just to get it to comply with the functions that they may want to utilize it for, for the department needs. If we look at no repair utilization investment, let's just take $1,000 out of it, we're not going to invest any money in it. And this excludes utilities and that kind of thing, but we're just saying, we're not going to maintain it the next five years, that's how much we'd be investing. If we were to raise it, just tear the thing down and build up, whether or not we salvage parts of it or not, you'd be looking at about 3.2 million. So it's higher, it's more expensive in the next five years. If we look at raising the building and then constructing a new office building, not to match the stone in detail on the load-bearing walls, that more conventional office construction, we would see a reduction in cost of about $4,000, so we'd be looking at 2.4 million dollars. Now, this is just the next five years, and this is what, these are four different options. These are all four options that we looked at in the assessment with the different scenarios. Now, if we look again, 20 years in the future, we'll find that the building, the courthouse does cost more in the long-term to maintain, mostly just because some of the facilities we're maintaining now, the other building systems are aging and need to be replaced at the time. So there's a cycle that's occurring there. And we're not going to continue to invest in that again. This is just an option, we're not suggesting this, we're just using it for numbers, discussion purposes. The 3.3 or 3.4 is what we would do if we were to raise the building, replace it with a stone exterior and repair that over the next 20 years. In other words, maintain it. And then this bottom one is 2.6 if we are to maintain that over the long-term. Now, again, all these taking into account inflation over time and different costs. But again, I'm going to go back just quickly so you can see, there just is a little bit of a difference in cost. And the reason why we share this information is we shared it with the commissioners to say, you can determine, we have not, the commissioners, as far as I'm aware, have not yet made a decision on which way they're going, but our recommendation has been, the most cost-effective option is going to be scenario six, which we'll show here shortly. And the reason why that is, the data tells us that raising the old courthouse and building new is the most cost-effective solution when you look at cost alone. The short, long-term costs are high for maintaining the old courthouse. Hazardous material mitigation will increase the cost of repairs. None of these costs that we've provided for that courthouse include asbestos remediation or lead paint remediation. Also, the registration as a historic facility would increase the cost of certain repairs and remodels for compliance. The nature of building construction limits can cost, can have a cost of increase on our innovations when we're trying to go through plaster and lap walls, it costs more than going through a stud frame, well, if you will. And of course, our significant life safety and accessibility improvements. And of course, our significant life safety and accessibility improvements that are required. And naturally, the first response is that a new facility will last further into the future. And that is true. But again, it'll hit a cycle where it'll have replacement costs as well with it. Now, here's the opportunities. Opportunities are if the pursuit is to raise the facility, salvage and reuse of some of the building components to retain history perhaps in the new construction. Or the building history and charms, the building can be documented, celebrated creatively with new construction. These are components that the county has the opportunity to examine. But in summary, the cost-effective solution which we were tasked to provide would be over the next 24 year, or next 20 years, all right? Would be to raise the existing courthouse and historic jail buildings and create a new consolidated county office facility. Relocate the county services from the county offices and health department to the new consolidated county office facility connected to the justice center. Raise the existing county offices, our county office building and construct a parking lot to serve as overflow parking for the consolidated county office and justice center complex and to sell the health department facility. When we look at all scenarios, these options provided the least cost of investment. And again, our recommendation is if the least cost scenario is the direction that the commissioner or the county wants to pursue, then this is a logical course of action to pursue. And it's called scenario six, incidentally. Its total 20-year plan costs is 12.3 million dollars total. And again, this aggregates across multiple facilities. Thank you.
There's probably a lot of questions. We have gathered some of those. But I'll give you guys a couple of minutes if you want to use the restroom. We'll pick back up here in about two, three minutes. But if you have any further questions that you want to submit to Nancy, we can get some of those put together. And then we will try to get through those questions as best as possible. We might not be able to get to every single question. But we're going to try to categorize those into some major categories and try to make sure we get a question from every major category discussed. Clint will be here to help us, to help answer some of those. So give us a couple of minutes to get organized and then we'll get started back up again.
I got offered a chair. I've been sitting all day.
Any more questions?
Okay, all right. So we've gone through, we've gotten a lot of comments and great comments and some questions. So I'm going to go through a number of these that are architectural nature. And I say architectural, building related. Things that I, as a consultant, can't answer. And I know there's a number of things that we're going through. One of the question is, one of the questions is that there was one water stain in the upper northeast office. This is, of course, at the courthouse. Is the roof sound? And that's a great question. In fact, the roof is in relatively good condition. If I can find where we placed it. We actually have, I believe, it being replaced in priority three. No, it's not entirely true. So in years 11, 20, 11 through 20, so close to 2037, we are recommending replacement of the metal panel roof. Metal panel roof right now is in good condition. We don't know the sub-condition of the underlayment there. We do know, however, that there are issues with some of the roof penetrations in that building currently right now. And so we have allocated, they're not current issues, but they're pending issues in the next, basically, six to 10 years that need to be addressed. Now, there's another component to keep in mind too, that there's the large metal roof on top, which was replaced not long ago, about the same time. It was actually set on top of the existing roof when the courthouse or the justice center was done. We know that from the records. But there's also a little bit of shingle roofing on, just a little addition on the back. It's basically kind of a walkway area. That actually needs to be done in, in the current period. And there's not a lot there, 119 square foot, the size of a room, 10 by 12. That needs to be replaced in the immediate future. So that's a, that's a great question. How many empty buildings would there be if this scenario six, I'm presuming, becomes the office, new structure, building for county? Okay. So in the scenarios, what we looked at is 100% capacity throughout the entire county facility. So for example, we would be utilizing all spaces. The scenario six, where we are demolishing facilities or suggesting they be raised, it's only because it costs less to raise them and to consolidate and build into one location than have multiple locations that have higher repair costs and then remodel costs. And so there would not be any empty buildings planned in the county. At least within the city of Baltimore and within our scope of work that we looked at. And again, what will happen to buildings that are vacated? The buildings that are vacated are planned for being raised. But again, we had scenarios where we looked at everything. So just like the courthouse, we looked at what happens if we raise the facility? What if we renovate the facility? Or if we add on to the facility? I need to emphasize that there is a, there are significant square footage that we need to build onto the county. If we do not, say we do not utilize the courthouse and we leave it as is, or maybe even just maintain it, we still have significant square footage that needs to be built somewhere for the county to meet their growth needs presently. And of course, where all the parking come from, one of the questions that related to was, again, scenario six, the idea was we would add parking where the current county offices are at. Will buildings have asbestos and lead paint? We don't know what all buildings have asbestos lead paint. We have some information on them, but we don't have all of those informations. So that's one of the things that's not accounted for is whenever you touch a building that does have asbestos, lead, most importantly asbestos and lead paint, the news need to be remediated. Just as they get touched, they need to be addressed for public safety. And the cost to remediate that would need to be determined. How much of the stone will be used for the new building? Jail should be reserved, question mark? I think these are, this is a great question. Right now, our focus, we're really at the 50,000-foot view, looking up. I'm trying to understand comprehensively how do we plan a budget just for meeting the needs long term? And so we haven't gone into details and the county has it. And I don't know who they will have do that or when that will be implemented in the direction they do choose to go. However, it is possible to reutilize the stone if they should do so with whatever team they may choose to work with whenever that time would come forward. So that's a great question. We did plan for the jail to be raised with the courthouse as part of our scenario. There was a question if it could be relocated, the jail, the old jail itself. We did not put a cost to determine whether that, you know, if it were to be relocated, what that cost could be to another site and maintain its historic history. So there's a plan, there's a question for the old courthouse. We do have a contingency. So when you're looking at the numbers, I think we shared with you previously, you may have seen, I'm not sure where it's at. But I think you're referencing, somebody might be referencing this document here, the 100 square foot for heavy office remodel that include contingencies in offices. That number itself does not. In the formulas that you look at in the documents that we provided, all physical construction actually ties down, runs down for the buildings aggregately. So we're not looking at just remodels of just, say, this building, sunflower, you know, the sunflower room here might be remodeled and we might touch another building, another building. We get all that aggregate square footage to give us a view. And then all those numbers plus new construction all come together with a contingency, no revenue profit of the contractor to get an idea of the aggregate value. And then we have a separate value, which is already built in, that allows us then to add on the lifecycle costs. So I think I've answered that question.
And I just wanted to give everyone a heads up. As we're sorting through the questions, we're not just trying to pick the easy ones, I promise. What we're trying to do is make sure we understand which ones we can answer tonight as best as possible. Some of the questions that have been asked, we may not be able to give you the answer tonight. Some of them are directed, directed to the commissioners and they don't have some of the data at their fingertips. Or some of the questions may actually be directed towards a past commission that isn't here tonight. So I want to make sure that we understand the questions we're going to try to answer in the time we do have are what we can answer with Clint as our expert tonight. So if we don't get to your question, please, we're not trying to offend you. We just want to make sure we get the information we can give you and get the answers we can get tonight instead of any struggling issues. There may be more follow-up questions. There's a lot of them that the commission's holding on to that we will try to answer in the future as we have commission meetings, as we continue to have this dialogue about this structure and the buildings in general. Hopefully Clint can continue on.
Thank you. Please give me these questions. So what is the useful life of, so if we replace the courthouse with a new building, or even if we add it on to the courthouse with a new building, what is the useful life of that new building you're comparing to? The courthouse has lasted 133 years. And I think that's a testament to the type of construction that we have here at Flint Hills. You know, a new building that we're anticipating will last over 100 years. Now, if we go with something like a pre-engineered metal building, if that was what the county determined they wanted to do, that lifecycle would be a little different, would be a little less than that. So we'd be looking at something that'd be comparable in the time. What really defines, interestingly enough, older buildings and newer buildings don't ultimately have different lifespans. What really matters is how they're maintained. So if the exterior envelope on an old building is not maintained, even if it's stone, it will fail earlier than a pre-engineered metal building with the metal skin that's being replaced and maintained constantly. So if I missed that earlier, I hope that helps answer that question because it really is, looking at new buildings, my indication was that with a new building going in, that it would have systems that wouldn't need as quick of a replacement. You'd be replacing like carpets and finishes, sealants, things of that nature. Now, why do you say new building will last longer? It should be comparable, it should be comparable to, oh, sorry. It should be, it should be, we should be able to completely rehabilitate the building, the existing courthouse, and we can. Again, we wanted to make sure, and I want to make sure that you were able to see that information today, that we can indeed rehabilitate that building. It's just a determination and a decision on how much investment to put in that building. Excellent question. So what happens to the now empty offices if a new building is created? The house, I think I answered that. Those empty ones would either be repurposed, it would be empty, or they would be raised in this scenario. And are you allowing any dollar for upkeep of these proposed facilities? And we are, in fact, in this scenario, and I'm going to use the courthouse as one scenario, but in the lifecycle assessment, we've done this for every facility countywide, whether it be new or future. We plan on how much repair needs, we're planning over a 20-year period for those facilities. In this case, we're actually looking at the same square footage of buildings. So our upkeep cost is essentially comparable to the same on these different buildings here. But we have here allocated $142,841 for new buildings, for new building replacement or for the new buildings for repair. And we've also shown, again, the difference when you go over the 20 years, kind of that, that total aggregate cost of repair. So that's an excellent question because really, we have to compare these apples to apples. And that's what we were challenged to do by the commission, commissioners, was to really get in here and understand what are going to be the cost differences so that a decision could be made, one confidently. What might be the market value of the courthouse as it is today? Can you put, I think you guys know if we can put a value on historical value? You know, historical value is something, you really can't place historical value on something. That's something that's really community-driven. Buildings do have relevance. They do have a measure of value that can be difficult to assign. And I think at the end of the day, it just kind of determines the value is the difference in numbers on how much that historic value means. The courthouse today, as far as its value goes, we could look at comparables for that. I did not look for the comparable for that facility. We looked at comparable than others. I think the courthouse, the commission would have to speak to this, but I think that because of the type of property it is, the land... Think the courthouse, the commission would have to speak to this, but I think that because of the type of property it is, the land it is, I'm not sure that it's a, it's a real, it's an easy sellable property. I think there might be some challenges with that. But it's an excellent question. What is the cost to move the old jail? Oh, we, I indicated, I'm, I don't know what the cost is, but I do know that it is done, and it is an acceptable thing to do with the Department of the Interior. Uh, what might be the market value of the courthouse? Is it, oh, I haven't answered that one. I think we've gone through all of these here, do you have any others? And I know these aren't answering all the questions, I know there were a number of questions that we saw that were more specific if the commissioners moved forward again. Ours is simply a recommendation that if the cost-effective, if the most cost-effective solution should be sought, again, we've, we've indicated what, what we have found, the numbers indicate for that, and that is all. Do you have anything else to respond to?
That, I, I'll turn the time over to the commissioners, have anything that I'd like to say before the wrap seems up? Otherwise, we will, uh, I'll run right over to you.
There was, there was a question, or several, about fixing up the appraiser's office and what was going to be lost out of that. And that probably became the catalyst for us really looking at what is the long-term plan for development and so on, because the appraiser's office was leaking and it had, for somebody working there, you cannot have that kind of office space. We needed to come to grips with having them be able to work in a safe environment and a clean environment, so on. And so that particular development is being done then, but probably all of us agreed that it was time to have a discussion about where we were going long-term, rather than doing one short building at a time. And we had that information sitting with us, but in answer to the questions that a couple of people put in on about the appraiser's office, it was time to do it, because that's where they have to work, and the timeline is, we're over here meeting because they are, the commissioners were at, and we just made those initial things, and then we wanted a long sequence of plans about how to move through this. And as I said to Clint, one more comment is that we needed space, the courthouse is not all the square footage that we need when we get into the future. So that piece is a, uh, a challenge to answer, how do we do that? To meet what every, we, every department had told us that they needed and what they envisioned, and what would be down the line, and what technology, and I think we gathered everything. So that's just a couple of quick answers on that.
Alright, I think that's all the information that we had for today. I hope that we were able to get to your questions. Like I said, there are still questions that we need, need to go gather more information about, you know, information about your past numbers invested into the courthouse, in previous maintenance, uh, we don't have all of it at our fingertips right now. However, this discussion is far from over, there's still lots to be talked about. Pat, you wanted to say something?
Yeah, I did, I wanted to say basically what you just got done saying. This discussion is far from being over, okay? And I appreciate everybody's interest in this, because I can guarantee you, I have this group right here, if I ask a show of hands and who thought should tear it down, there probably wouldn't be very many, okay? So, you know, I, I appreciate the direction you're going. But there again, you can see what we're looking at for the cost, and not only the cost, but what you get in the long run. There's stone walls up there that are two-foot thick that you've got to build around. You've got to actually design workspaces around these walls that are carrying, you know, the roof and everything else. So, and, and this all came of trying to figure out what to do over the next ten, fifteen, twenty years. And as far as I'm concerned, we have done some remodeling in the administration office. We've done some of that during the winter, when we're with our in-house people, do it, you know, keep them busy, they've done some good jobs. Uh, the GIS just got a little bit of a renovation. And as far as I'm concerned, that old building over there, it'll last probably another ten or fifteen years. And that's why we're doing the appraiser's office also, is because it's giving them a place, it's gonna be up to snub, the technology's gonna be right, and it's gonna be a nice area and workplace for these people based in there. So as far as I'm concerned, they're, by doing that, they're stuck there for another ten or fifteen years. The cost of that project, I think, was about a hundred and fifty thousand, right?
Correct.
So I'm not saying we've got a hundred and fifty thousand to throw out the window every, you know, three or four years to do something like this, but at the same time, it's a lot cheaper, maybe we can save a little bit of money to do some other projects here. We've got Public Works, uh, maintenance facility down, uh, in the Public Works Department that, golly, how old is it? Forty or fifty years?
Nineteen thirty-seven.
It's not big enough to get equipment in there. So we've got, we've got a lot of things that are gonna creep up, and we're just trying to see how to deal with these at this point in time. And...
Are you still planning on putting it on the ballot?
That's something that, as far as I'm concerned, if that's what the people want to vote, I mean, if, if there's a vote on it, I would say, you know, I, I hate to be Pontius Pilate or somebody, but I could wash my hands of it real easy. But, uh, at the same time, there was a question, you know, there was a, there was a question submitted here. How can three people make a decision for this whole area? And, you know, whenever, I'm gonna say this, and I'll say it because I, I'll, that's just the way I am, you all know that. It's, I've been up here for nine, going on nine years now, and this is the first time on a lot of things that my decision has been questioned, and, or it's been thrown at me, how can three people make a decision? So, and we've made a lot of big ones over the last nine, ten years. So this is how important, I'm just saying, this is how important this has brought to me, my attention, okay? Because it has to be important, because this is the biggest conglomeration of people I've seen since I've been up here for any meeting. So budget, I mean, we have budget hearing meetings, we're gonna have one another two months, and there probably won't be three people there. Steve, you might be there. But I just wanna thank everybody for coming, and we've got all your questions, and as soon as we get a little more depth or insight into this, you'll be, you folks will know, well, Mark's sat here writing everything down right now, and he'll be in the paper. But we're not gonna go behind your backs or make a decision that you folks are not gonna be made aware of with enough chance to come up and make your feelings known again, so thank you for coming.
Pat?
Yes?
Before you're done, uh, do you have any notions of having a public forum a little less orchestrated?
Not by less orchestration, explain what you...
Take the questions from the floor and answer it.
You know, you know, I would do, I would do that, but there's a lot of, a lot of these questions. I've got a question written here, in nineteen sixty, there was seven hundred and eighty thousand dollars set aside for maintenance or upkeep. What happened to that money? You know, a lot of seven years old, I don't know, I can't tell you what happened. But, well, it's just something, you know, if, if you're gonna ask me a question like that, that night, I'm gonna say, I have no idea.
Well, I'll find out for you, right? But I'll find out for you, right?
I'll do what I can do.
Okay.
I'll do it, they won't miss, might be over in the jail. But it might, uh, we'll check on it. Okay, then you can tell us what happened to the money? What, what, what year? Nineteen sixty, I think, was it, or was it not? Sixty-nine, I'm sorry. It's going into high school.
So, so is there a possibility that it's not a public forum?
We'll, we'll see, you know, I'm not opposed to it. But it's, you know, I, I think tonight went real, you know, went real well, because, you know, like I said at the beginning, it was informative. And we got some questions that we could go and, and look at, and maybe study a little bit, kind of see what direction, you know, will come out. And give us an idea of maybe what to look for as far as material to answer questions with. And I'm gonna, as far as I'm concerned, we can do this again. I mean, it's, it's not gonna hurt my feelings at all, but I, I, I think I would seriously be leaning, it's not gonna cost us anything to put it on the ballot, right? County-wide election, so as far as I'm concerned, that might be the best way to go. But I'm not gonna, I'm not gonna, right now, I would say that's the direction I'm in, okay?
May I hand deliver my scenario number seven?
Create, create the staff, and we obviously will have the opportunity to look that over and see what we can find.
I can send an electronic copy.
No, I won't get you electronic.
Alright, the question, I think, just for everyone, what, you know, there's a scenario seven from, from a resident that wants to be considered, and we're gonna take this information and evaluate it, so make sure that we understand what it's saying, and compare it to what we already know, to find out what, you know, what value it brings. So it'll take some time to look through that.
Would this be a bond issue? Whatever you're gonna do here?
I, I wouldn't, I wouldn't, I'm not gonna answer that right now, because I, uh, I think there's a lot of areas that you could answer, or like historical, if there's any grants available, you know, how do you weed the grant out from the bond, or the cost, or what we're doing here? That, whatever question like that comes about, I, I will comment on it, because I don't know enough to what it takes to get it on the bond, okay? Or what, what direction it will go.
When I came here tonight, I was handed a card, and I said, what do you, and they told me write down my question. I said, what are you doing? Screamed into the card, so you don't answer everybody's question, and the person said no, and that was your county clerk. Now here, you screened all the cards, and so all of us that put something down didn't answer.
And that's why, that's why I'm gonna sit down.
I'm not very happy about that.
Well, I, and there's cards, I didn't screen them, I could, we gave them to...
Again, like I said, I'm really looking through the cards to try to make sure we could answer the ones we can. We're, we're not avoiding the questions, we just need to make sure that we can provide the information we can. We have not thrown any cards away, we have all the cards, and we are gonna continue to go through those, so all the questions can be answered. And we're not, we're not trying to screen them so that we don't answer questions, we're just trying to make sure we can answer the ones we can tonight, with the limited time we have available. We are limited with having a meeting like this to be able to answer every question in the kind of detail that you probably do want.
So the ones that Dick did answer, you're gonna answer, and how? Or you're sending out an email or somewhere, you know, with the less things, or some of the questions that this meeting that Dick had answered, and have you answered them?
That's a good question. I'll need to get together with staff and figure out what's the best form for putting all those together, whether it be online or some... Yeah, but we do have all the questions, and we are not gonna throw those away, I promise. Alright, with that, everybody, I, again, this was an informative meeting, I, we could probably sit and talk about it for a very long time. And there will be more opportunities to talk about it in the future, when it's brought up on the commission agenda, we'll make sure that is available for everyone to know about it, so we can talk about it and have questions answered in that forum also, and there'll be more, more discussion overall. So I appreciate your time tonight, more? And, this question about the Justice Center, but I think we can address that offline, if it's not related to the court system. Thank you everyone for coming tonight, please, you know, check the county's website for more questions and more opportunities.